Dudley?
Mike Dudley here.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who here.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic here.
Davis?
Shayla Davis here.
Blake?
Jason Blake here.
Burke?
This is Matt Burke and I'm here.
Vaughn?
I'm Vaughn and I am here.
Okay.
The record shows that all seven council members are present at the meeting tonight. Reading and disposal of minutes, um, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular minutes of council from the City of Garfield Heights for Monday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty as written. Do I have a second?
I'm Vaughn, I'll second.
Barb, did you get that?
Yes, Thomas is second.
Okay, on the motion, can you please take a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke, I vote yes.
Vaughn?
I'm Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley? Muted.
I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record showed that the council meeting minutes for October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty passes with seven yes votes, we also have the minutes of the special council meeting held on October twenty-ninth, two thousand ten, I would like to make a motion that we accept those minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Dunne who, uh, I, there was not any, uh, the, um, what, 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 let's see, there was supposed to be a correction on those and it, it wasn't, uh, distributed?
Was the special, the special meeting minute?
Oh no, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the, uh, safety meeting, my mistake.
No, the safety meeting will be done with the safety committee.
Okay, my mistake, sorry.
Okay, on the motion made by myself and seconded by Councilman Blake to accept the minutes of the special meeting of council for October twenty-ninth, will the clerk please take a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke, I vote yes.
Vaughn?
I'm Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record reflects, special minutes, the special meeting of council for October twenty-ninth, two thousand, has been approved with seven yes votes. Uh, we are in committee for this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Davis?
Just for the record, I gave, uh, my committee report during caucus. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Davis? Um, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair- Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is all, we have one follower with council, I would like to remind them of the, uh, legislative meeting on, uh, Thursday, September twelfth, November twelfth, at six-thirty, uh, for teleconference meeting, and, uh, again, that, uh, Burke has set up on video line, so we should have a little bit more participation, any interest, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Nenadovic, I just wanted to be clear, the, uh, well, Mr. Nenadovic is talking about is the announcement of the legislative committee coming up on, uh, Thursday, and, uh, I do have that already, uh, put together as a Zoom call or a Zoom thing, and that information will be posted on the city's website tomorrow, as far as I know, I'm working with the, uh, city to try to get that done right away, so, um, are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that next week, November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth at six P.M., we will be having our annual finance meeting, so again, that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, that is, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dudley, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt, uh, uh, Councilman Vaughn, let him finish.
Go ahead, Mike, I was done, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, that tomorrow, Tuesday, uh, November the tenth, we have an award meeting, meeting at six-thirty.
Okay. I, did, did you get that, Barb?
Uh, Councilman Dudley mentioned that tomorrow there's going to be a laser means hearings, and, um, it said, um, at the time, I believe it's six-thirty. Yes, at six-thirty tomorrow.
I believe there was just a lot of static in the line, so I wanted to make sure.
Thank you for checking out, because I, I couldn't, really couldn't hear the end. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Dudley. Okay, let's move on to the reports of the mayor, uh, Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I do, I have a short report, I'm going to start tonight, uh, with the legislation, uh, ordinance number eighty-two is approving the firefighters' bargaining agreement for a three-year term beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-one, and I would like to add with this is that working with the firefighters union was really a pleasure, uh, they not only took into, uh, consideration the needs of the firefighters, but also the needs of the city, uh, they were very cooperative and I was very thankful for that. Ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand twenty, with the approval of the planning commission, a person at each criteria outlined in this ordinance can have an honorary street added to the original street name, not as a replacement, but in addition to. Just, uh, moving on to a quick report, uh, because of the COVID virus, the, uh, the possibility of having COVID virus outbreaks at the city, we've had a lot of close calls, they got nothing serious, uh, but we have in fact closed the city to the public again, uh, and will keep it closed until we feel that the time is safe for the employees and the public, so, uh, if you need to get into the, uh, building department, we have the drop boxes at the front door, you could drop whatever information you need in there and the building department will contact you. And the only else thing I have, and I want to wish all the veterans, uh, throughout the country, Happy Veterans Day, it's coming up, I believe, on Wednesday, and, uh, we can't say or do enough for our veterans, uh, we certainly appreciate all of their efforts, not only the veterans, but their families also. With that, Mr. Chairman, you had my report.
Thank you, Mayor Collova, does anyone have a question for Mayor Collova on his report? I would like to start with, uh, Ward one Councilman Mike Dudley, do you have any questions for Mayor Collova?
Uh, no, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ward two Councilman Charles Donahue, do you have any questions for the mayor on his report?
No, Mr.
That's no question, thank you. Okay, Mr. Nenadovic, do you have any questions for the mayor on his report?
Oh, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Davis, do you have any questions for the mayor on his report?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Councilman Blake, do you have any questions for the mayor on his report this evening?
No questions this evening, thank you.
I do not have any questions either, Councilman Vaughn, do you have any questions for the mayor on his report?
And this is Tom Vaughn, and no, I do not have any questions at this time for the mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our reports of the mayor, um, we will move now to communications from citizens specifically on tonight's agenda, um, will the, uh, clerk please read the rules?
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, but excuse me, uh, we received some correspondents, some citizens, would you like me to read it?
Yes, you know what, Barb, I digress, I'm sorry, I, I missed that, um, yeah, communications house, um, let's, let's miss that from right now, um, do you have some, uh, letters?
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, if you could go ahead and read those letters?
All righty, uh, we have three letters. The first one is dated November fifth, um, it is from, uh, James S. Seeny of fifty-three, fifty-five, East one hundred and twenty-fourth Street, "To the Garfield Heights City Council, I would like to take this time and say something about our police department. Garfield Heights Police Department has always been professional and courteous towards my family and I. Our police department has always been there when called upon. Our officers work hard and are dedicated to the city of Garfield Heights. Our officers are working with a short staff and they work inside a building that is outdated and falling apart. Our officers deserve better than that. They are called upon to protect the lives of many people who they don't know and those strangers don't appreciate our officers. For people who put their life on the line each day, they put on that uniform, they deserve better. My family and I will always support the Garfield Heights Police Department and we truly appreciate their selfless dedication to our great city. Thank you." Um, going on, the second letter was dated November eighth, and it is from Bill Douglas of one-three-six-six-five Hathaway Road. "Council President and Members of Council, my name is Bill Douglas. I have lived in Garfield for approximately eighteen years and been an active member of the community for about six years. With tensions between police and citizens on the rise, I am writing this to show my support for Garfield Heights Police. I have had a few occasions where I have had to call the police and they handle these issues respectfully and professionally. Recently, I had the opportunity to participate in a Saturday night ride along with an officer and saw firsthand what these men and women experience on a daily basis. The calm demeanor they display while being completely disrespected, verbally abused, and harassed is astounding. I can confidently tell you that these officers exemplify proper policing. These are men and women of character and are on the front lines every day keeping us, the Garfield Heights community, safe. Over the past couple of years, I have had the pleasure to make personal relationships with a few of the officers and there is no better group of individuals to protect our city. These men and women provide a thankless job for no glamour. They leave their families daily and are hated because of a badge and a uniform they wear. I will with no shame support our police without question. I am not writing this in request for action, but with hope that my words do not go unnoticed. Thank you." And the last letter is dated November ninth, and it is from Frank and Teddy Taglerini of one-two-four-zero-four Darlington Avenue, "To the Garfield Heights City Council, my husband and I fully support our police department. We are not like other cities who have all the luxuries that police need. We are working on a very tight budget and short staffed. They are driving around in vehicles with over two hundred thousand miles on them and work out of an antiquated police department. They risk their lives every day to protect the citizens of Garfield Heights without getting the respect they deserve." And that's the last letter, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Barb, and, and again, thank you for reading. I, uh, somehow skipped right over that part, um, I appreciate everybody's letters and, uh, we will move on now to, um, communications from ci- citizens on tonight's agenda. Will the clerk please read the rules?
Comments shall be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes, with comments limited to legislation on the courage evening's agenda. Notes to citizens shall speak more than once.
Okay, are there any-
Unmuted.
-residents on the call this evening that would like to speak specifically on the two ordinances we have on the agenda? There are none?
Mr. Ree- What are, what are the two, what are the ordinance I've got on the call, ladies?
Um, ordinance number eighty-two dash two thousand twenty, uh, which is a, uh, has to do with the collective bargaining agreement between the Garfield Heights Firefighters Local Three Forty and the City of Garfield Heights, and then ordinance number eighty-three two thousand twenty, which is enacting a new chapter in our, um, code, chapter nine-oh-four, titled Honorary Street Names. I, I assume this is Ms. Joyner?
Yeah, but, no, I don't have any questions, I was just wondering, I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome, let's move on to, uh, ordinances for this evening, beginning with ordinance number eighty-two dash twenty twenty, will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance number eighty-two dash twenty twenty, sponsored by Mayor Vic Collova, co-sponsored by Councilman Burke, Nenadovic, Dunne who, Vaughn, and Blake. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Garfield Heights and the Garfield Heights Firefighters Local Three Forty of the International Association of Firefighters.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to consider ordinance number eighty-two dash twenty twenty by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke and I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Dunne who votes yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record shows that under title consideration for ordinance number eighty-two dash twenty twenty, there were seven yes votes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule, will the clerk please take a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke and I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record reflects, that under suspension of the three reading rule for ordinance number eighty-two dash two thousand twenty, there were seven yes votes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive rule twenty-four, will the clerk please take a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke and I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record reflects, that under waiver rule twenty-four for ordinance number eighty-two dash two thousand twenty, there were seven yes votes, and on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke, Burke?
This is Matt, oh, yes?
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record reflects, that on its adoption, ordinance number eighty-two dash two thousand twenty passes with seven yes votes. We'll move on now to ordinance number eighty-three dash two thousand twenty, will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance number eighty-three dash twenty twenty, sponsored by Councilman Dudley, Burke, Blake, Dunne who, Vaughn, and Councilwoman Davis. An ordinance enacting chapter nine-oh-four titled Honorary Street Names of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Garfield Heights to allow for honorary street names on the approval of the planning commission.
I'd like to make a motion to consider by title, will the clerk please take your roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke and I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record shows, that ordinance number eighty-three dash two thousand twenty, under title consideration, there were seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule for ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand twenty, will the clerk please take a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke, I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record shows, that under the suspension of the three reading rule, ordinance number eighty-three dash two thousand twenty, there were seven yes votes, and on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke, I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley, I vote yes.
Dunne who?
Chuck Dunne who, yes.
Nenadovic?
Michael Nenadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
As the record shows, that ordinance number eighty-three dash two thousand twenty passes with seven yes votes. That concludes our ordinances for this evening, we will move on to comments by citizens, will the clerk please read the rules?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has, which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the city hall department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a city hall department or councilperson is made and there's a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then be presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes, notes to citizens shall be heard more than once.
Okay, at this time, do we have any residents on the call that would like to address council?
Uh, this is Melissa Leonard, my address is forty-eight ninety-three East Eighty-Fourth Street.
Okay, Mrs. Leonard?
I'm just falling in love with Mr. Nenadovic, I, um, spoke with him last week and sent him an email, I was supposed to be getting a response from him on some information on, uh, where else I can find information on the council meetings and, uh, ordinances and all of that, and I haven't heard back, and I'm just wondering, since I haven't heard back, if anyone else could direct me to that information, if someone has, uh, an email or, uh, some type of, uh, electronic motive communication, website, anything of the sort where I can get information on what's going on in the city, if you could provide me that, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Miss Leonard?
Yes?
This is Councilwoman Nenadovic, I did send you an email telling you go to the city's website, click on council, and when it goes down to council, you'll see two things, it'll state city ordinances, and it'll say city council meetings, if you click on one of those, it will take you through the ordinances, and it's also said that if you type on the left hand, or not type, but touch in the left-hand corner, there are three bars, you can do a search and find out, just type in what you want, and it'll ta- it'll take you right to the ordinance, I did send it.
Okay, well, I didn't get that email, and I'm not sure if you sent it from the Garfield one or what, because I know the Garfield, like, I had sent you the email through the Garfield email address and you didn't get that, so there might be something wrong with the email address, did you, did you use your personal email address or the Garfield email address?
I sent you the one I told you, I went over the phone, the solitary one.
Okay, because I didn't get that either, so something, somewhere, somehow, there's a breakdown in, in communication with the email, so, um, so I'll check that out, if you could actually resend it, because I didn't get anything and I've been checking and I looked in my spam, obviously, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, I just am trying to get the information and I don't know where else to turn, so, um, if you could send that again and I will call you, if I didn't receive it, I would appreciate it.
There's no problem, you're not throwing me under the bus, I would rather you call and say, yeah, because like I said, I did send it, I will resend it to you, I'll do that first thing after the meeting, and, uh, it'll give you a brief explanation, and if you would call me afterwards when you get it, I mean, I'll walk you through it, because I did, like I says, it was sent to you, uh, let me see here, hold on, mm, three days ago.
Okay, and that'll have all the updated information as far as, uh, the council meetings, the Zoom calls and all that?
Well, that won't have that on there yet, this, this is just past meetings, the, uh, scrolls and, uh, uh, are, are what you have to go through, uh, and look at the, uh, ord boards, uh, I don't believe there's an avenue that, yet, on the website of, of upcoming meetings, I could be wrong, I don't know of that.
Okay, well, kind of, that's my question to the other committee members, is, does anyone have maybe a social media account I can follow where I can get the information that, you know, maybe it's specific to your ward, but maybe that I could follow that way and get specific information?
Mrs. Leonard?
Oh, Mr. Burke? Do you have a pretty, uh, website for that?
Yes, I was just gonna say, Mrs. Leonard, I do, I did have a, a conversation today with our, one of our IT personnel, um, our lead IT person is out, I believe, right now, he is going to, um, try to set something up tomorrow, uh, we announced about four meetings today via Zoom, and we're trying to get them placed on our, our website tomorrow so that you'll be able to get onto the website and be able to just click on the links, if you have Zoom, it'll open up Zoom for you, um, I know that, uh, many of us council members do have different pages that we, um, have, I have a wardstick community awareness page on Facebook, if you're more than welcome to, to, uh, try to join that and I'll approve you, um, and I think Councilwoman Davis, did you want to say something, I, I thought I should try to chime in there.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Leonard, I just wanted to share, as the chair of the Communication and Technology Committee for City Council, uh, you know, with the pandemic and everything that's going on, we're trying to get a little more in sync with sharing information, I put information out, I do an email blast every few days as well as a newsletter, so you could always be added to my list if you wanted to do that, and if you follow my council page, I post all of the meetings, at least the agenda, so that people are aware, you know, when the meeting is going to happen, and I send that out in an email as well. As the chairman said, we are trying to work with IT to try to change our website a little bit, because I do realize, and this committee was actually created with the new council members specifically, because we were not doing a very good job of sharing information with the community, um, it's gotten a little better, but obviously, it's not where it needs to be if you still don't have access to basic and simple information, so, again, you can be added to- So again, you can be added to my ward group, uh, Councilman, uh, Burke's ward group, my, um, council page, as well as my email database if, if you would like to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because I found myself frustrated again today because I thought today's call was gonna be Zoom. I was looking everywhere for that information and, you know, I, I've been on the call last few weeks and it's every week I'm getting frustrated because I'm told, "Hey, this week's Zoom," and now I'm looking for a Zoom link somewhere. I can't find anything and now I'm frustrated again. So, um, obviously there's a breakdown somewhere. I'm just trying to get the information and I think those, uh, ways will be helpful and, and until the website gets up to date. And I understand it's a pandemic, everyone's, you know, trying their best, but I just want the information and so that's my only concern, but thank you guys, that'll help.
Thank you, and I agree. Now, we've got it, we've gotta do better and I believe that we are now working towards that. And also, um, there will be, the announcement has not come out yet, but there will be a Communications and Technology Committee meeting in early December. And so you're welcome to join that meeting to kind of share, you know, some of the challenges and ideas you may have because I'd like to put together a plan for twenty twenty-one on how we can do a better job of communicating effectively. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to council this evening?
Yes, it's James, it's, it's at York Boulevard.
Okay, Mr. Bruce, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you very much. My question tonight, um, I was remembering that there was a-
This is Garfield, I can't hear anything.
Uh, your phone seems to be getting a lot of, uh, cutting in and out. Mr. Bruce, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you much better now.
Yes.
Uh, can you take your address again just for the, for, so she knows?
Yes, I can. Yes.
James Bruce thirteen six hundred York Boulevard.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, great, thank you. I, um, I have a, a question and a few, uh, comments as well. Um, I wanted to say I appreciate the legislative meeting, uh, being had and I appreciate it being had, um, via Zoom and I'm looking forward to, um, the council meetings switching over to Zoom as well. I think they'll be, I think they're very productive and will be very helpful going forward. Um, so I appreciate the efforts that have been put into that. Um, I did have a question from the legislative meeting. I was under the understanding from the legislative meeting that, uh, the legislation that Councilwoman Davis brought forth, um, declaring racism a public health crisis would be presented tonight. And so I have, uh, my, one of my questions is, um, why that resolution was not presented tonight? Um, it seemed as though when it was read last week at the meeting that it had, um, held, had all the appropriate legal language and nobody had any oppositions and, um, so I, I just had a question as, as far as why that wasn't, um, wasn't presented. Um, Councilman Burke, you let, um, talk to me for a bit. Um, you would, you appreciate that to happen and so I was looking for that tonight. Um, and I also want to, um, clear up some, uh, some maybe misunderstandings, um, from the correspondence with council, um, that all addressed their disrespect and hatred toward the police. And I want to make sure that, um, that, uh, members of council and the mayor and our, uh, police chief and the police officers know that, um, as far as I know, nothing has been communicated with City Council, um, aspect of, 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 or with any hatred toward our police force. I believe many of the people who have been calling in over the past few months have much respect for those people who are police officers and for those police officers who do their job well and with dignity and respect. And I think there are a lot of people who appreciate them. Um, I, I will say that, uh, that doesn't mean that there is, there aren't any impureness that need to be faced, um, much as when, uh, city council members have disagreements. It doesn't mean that, um, that, um, that there's not respect, um, for other members of council and the mayor. Um, it simply means that we can still do better. And I will still go back to, to my, my statements from, uh, the community, the clear defensive events that was had, uh, that Councilwoman Davis put on where Representative House asked us all, raise our hands, we felt that we've protected every day in our city and how I did not see three of our black residents with their hands up when we opened our eyes. And so until that's the case, um, we can still better, can still do better in our city in many different ways. And so I want to say that I appreciate our police officers and those who do their job with dignity and respect for all people regardless of their race or color. And I think that, so one of the letters mentioned that there is support of our police department without question. I think that's very important to us, where we're given control because it's our job. Uh, we are standers right there, um, to, to question things and to make sure that everything possible is being done so that there are equitable outcomes in our community for all people regardless of their race and color of their skin. So I just wanted to clear that up, that, um, there is no disrespect intended to our police officers. And I personally don't know anyone who hates, um, our police officers in our city. And so I want to speak up to that because as I was reading in the, in the, there's a book, um, titled White Futility, and as I read that, a company resonated with me over the conversations that we've been having in our city council meetings over the past few months is that racism is so inclined in the fabric of America that oftentimes feels like when you speak up against racism, we are speaking up against America. And that's not the case at all. But that's how it's fine, the racism often is in the fabric of our communities and we must continue to stand up for this. So that's, those, those are my comments, but I do, I would like the question answered, um, the, um, the resolution about declaring racism as a public health crisis and why that was not brought to light and what the plan for that is. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, uh, this is Tim Riley. I can answer that question, why the resolution didn't go forward. Um, as all of council knows, and if, if, in order to have legislation presented for the Monday agenda, it must be in the law department's office by five o'clock on Wednesday. This meeting was held on Thursday and ended, I believe, about eight or nine o'clock at night. So it was well past the timeframe that, um, we set to have legislation put up. We have to do this because in order to get the packets out to council and efficiently run the office instead of the agenda, there has to be a deadline. We do make exceptions in emergency situations, but only when it's an emergency situation that something needs to be passed in order for something to happen as far as a contract or purchases. So, Mr. Bruce, I had mentioned that in the meeting that night, pretty clearly that legislation has to be in the office by Wednesday at five o'clock and that legislation wasn't running, you know, wasn't approved and asked to be put on the agenda until essentially Thursday evening late. So that, that resolution will be on the next agenda. Thanks. That's all I have.
Uh, th- th- thank you, uh, Mr. Riley. I appreciate that. I, I, I did not understand that from the meeting, so I appreciate your clarification.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Is there anyone else that wishes to, uh, address council this evening? If there are none, we will move on to miscellaneous business. Will the clerk please read the rules?
This involves the business of council and the legislative function. Any other problems should be directly dealt with by the department involved. This area of the agenda shall be limited to legislative business, ward business, lack of attention to ward problems, and so forth.
Okay, this evening we will start with, uh, Ward One, Councilman, uh, Mike Dudley. You have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I want to tell everybody, you know, uh, keep our vets, past and present, keep them in your prayers, you know? We got a lot of veterans out there, as you know, they are struggling through mental issues and some of them right now are struggling financially because of not just COVID-nineteen, but other issues. It's not as easy as sometimes you think. People say, "We got a VA program," but you got to go down a prospect and apply. We got a lot of veterans because of their, their mental status, they don't exactly understand that and that's how some of them is out on the street now. But I tell you, keep them in your prayers. It's not easy serving. It's not easy serving because we have, I believe, four veterans that currently sit on council as well and they can speak to that potion that we have a lot of veterans who need help. You know, a lot of them go through mental issues and financial issues and they suffer like anybody else, but sometimes they suffer worse. But like I say, keep them in your prayers. And sometime when you see them and you know they true vets and stuff, you know, or people say, "Well, they, they bagging," some of them are not bagging, some of them are just trying to make it. And that dollar you hand them, not out, can you, you're not gonna miss it, you know? Sometime be a little generous, especially with the holiday season coming up. If you see them sitting there out there and they looking a little hungry, nothing wrong with buying them a sandwich and offering them a sandwich or doing it for any homeless person for that matter. Like I say, keep them in their prayers, keep all our veteran prayers, keep them in past and present. And also, I'd like to take an opportunity to read an email, short email, that was sent to myself and Councilwoman Davis, but I am not gonna use the person name who sent that. I'm not gonna do that because I only asked a chance, but I do want to address this and it'll be a short address and it's a short email. Email came to me myself and Councilwoman Davis. On the email, it says, "Good day. I finally got a chance to read the neighborhood news this morning and only you were the only two members of council that did not recognize our veterans. While I am not a veteran, I have many friends who are. I do find it very disrespectful for the leader of any community to not recognize these brave men and women. I am curious why you two did not recognize our veterans." I'm not gonna read what it sent back, it's, you know, it's a little lengthy, but I just want to make it short, you know? We got enough stuff going on in the city as it is. We got enough stuff going on in America. And when you single out without just calls and you're gonna single out two people and for the wrong reasons, maybe it's not for the wrong reason, I don't know. But just because I do not advertise, just because Councilwoman Davis did not take an article out in the neighborhood news, it don't mean that we do not support our veterans. You know, that's absolutely ludicrous, one of the most things I saw, and like I say, me emails should have never been sent. It's like trying to add fuel to a fire in which myself as well as her and others I fought so hard to try to calm down, especially in our city of Garfield Heights. I am a veteran. My dad is at two towns, served two tours in Vietnam and I believe our mayor is a Vietnam veteran. I believe Michael, uh, Councilwoman Nenadovic came out there here, well, maybe Chuck Donahue, I'm not sure, but I think Chuck is closer to me. But they can tell you, it ain't been easy for them as well. And they had also accused me several times that I could not personally make our Veteran Day, uh, event here because I have my brother who's a Vietnam-era veteran who buried and written. And some days on Veteran's Day, sometimes, some years, I'll have to go to Vietnam and I just have full conversation for them as if he's still here. That don't mean I disrespect the veterans because I do not be here on Veteran's Day inside the city. It doesn't mean that she don't take an article out. She disrespected them. So you have to save comments like that. You have to choose them wisely. You have to take in consideration everything that's going on today. You don't want to fuel any fire to any event. Myself, I took it personally as being disrespectful towards me and disrespectful towards her because I would not call for it. And then I say, "If I don't take the turkey out in the neighborhood news, whether I be a bad guy, she be a bad person, that she don't put," but she always put a dinner. I don't do it because I advocate St. Timothy Manor, which is forty people in St. Timothy, um, park where forty people live out there through an organization that are rotten. So I don't really have nothing left over to do to seventy dollars in some town which is asked for by the neighborhood news, but I think it's great for those individuals who choose to do it. So when you email people and even elect officials and anybody else, I ask you to be courteous and kind of think about what's going on before you send no messages. Because a message can not just be misinterpreted when I think it was interpreted right, but it can create some issues. And you don't want to see that happen, you know? So kind of keep in common sense yourself, but remember, as a veteran, people do love veterans, people do look out for veterans and posts and penny, not just neighborhood news. They do a lot of things for, for me when I need to get a disposal thing out for, um, meetings or whatever. But you don't want to do that. You don't want to put it out like that. And I ask you to choose your words wisely at times. And Mr. Chairman, I tell you honestly, may I come out and blast it, but I say, you know what? We have enough issues in the city and I know Councilwoman Davis agrees with that too. We don't need to add anything on to that. And I, just keep our veterans in prayer and, and keep me in prayer, my family, and I will do you all families as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Donahue?
Uh, just a couple of things. So again, I'd like to wish everybody, all the veterans, have a good day. Thank you for your service. I appreciate that. And, uh, last, uh, meeting, I said I was going to, uh, to have a contest for the Ward Two, uh, residents. Um, I, it'll be something in the, uh, neighborhood news talking about it. I put it on, um, where is it? The, uh, Nextdoor Neighborhood, uh, Garfield Heights Ward Two on, uh, online. And I'm, uh, I'd like to announce it right now. It's, uh, potential Garfield Heights Ward Two Residents Thanksgiving card, gift card contest. It's gonna start on, at noon on November twelfth. The first twenty colors from Ward Two Garfield Heights resident, only one card per household. My phone number is two one six five zero one seven six six five. It'll be a twenty-five dollar gift card and you tell me if you want it from Giant Eagle or Dave's Market. I will personally deliver it to you within a week. Um, again, it's just for Garfield Heights Ward Two Resident and it's only one gift card per household. I wish everybody good luck and the number again is two one six five zero one seven six six five. It's also posted at the library. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Councilwoman Nenadovic, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, first of all, Chuck, you're gonna get a lot of phone calls, buddy. God bless you. Uh, secondly, uh, the, uh, Veterans Day, eleven eleven, uh, take a walk to the monument, say a little prayer for all those up there. Only take a minute, stay in your car, drive by. Just do something to recognize all those that have died and all those that are serving now. Uh, peacetime, wartime, they still, they're putting themselves out there and, uh, we gotta take care of that. And, um, the other thing that I have is, Mrs. Leonard, give me a call. Very interested why you didn't get my email. Uh, that's been happening quite a bit, not so much with the city, but my private email. Uh, call me on that six four one number. Are you still there, Mrs. Leonard?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you still have my six four one number?
I think it's online.
Okay, let me get it to you. Two one six six four one seven zero five six.
Five four four?
Seven zero five six. Call me right after you-
Okay, I'll be here.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Nenadovic. Councilwoman Davis, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I will start off referencing what Councilwoman Dudley stated about the email that we received and I responded back to that email. I guess the most troubling thing for me was that Veterans Day is not until Wednesday and so for me to be accused of something that hasn't come to pass is a little frustrating, but, you know, it goes with the territory, so I responded accordingly. And that's all I will say about that. Moving along, I would like to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day, my father included, who is no longer alive. And one of the things that he used to always say to me is that you must appreciate veterans. It doesn't matter how long they were in- you must appreciate veterans, it doesn't matter how long they were in the service, and this was one of the quotes that he said, "We don't know them all, but we owe them all," and that's a quote that I agree with. Secondly, I would like to say happy anniversary to myself and the other new council people. It's been a year since we've been on council, and we've managed to make it through a pandemic, through, uh, civil unrest, as well as, you know, some of that happening in our own community. But we still stand, and we're trying to do what is best and what's right for the community. And I just want to make this little statement, I believe in the power of community, though times are challenging, it's the challenges, challenges that push us to our highest level that we never thought we could possibly accomplish. And I believe that the more we have these difficult conversations, the more uncomfortable we become, we will learn to do a lot better for everyone. Times have changed drastically, and we have to be willing to change with the times. My last thing that I would like to mention is that I've gotten several calls from residents about parking on the street. I'd like to let everyone know that there is still a parking ordinance, there is a ban during a certain time. If that is an issue and a concern, you can call the non-emergency number to the police department directly. To the residents who have reached out to me on a hundredth street, on East Ninety-Six, as well as East Eighty-Fifth, I have contacted the police department during, um, the night shift, and they're going to pay special attention to those streets. Again, if you have those types of concerns, there still is an ordinance in effect, obviously it's a little loose because our police department, you know, has shrunk in size, we have five officers on each shift, and so they don't necessarily have the ability to patrol cars being parked if there's crime happening. But again, the ordinance is still, is still in effect, you do have a right to call, or you can contact me, and I will contact the police department for you. With that, Mr. Chairman, you have my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. Councilman Blake, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank, uh, all the veterans in the community and throughout the country for their service. I'd also like to thank my colleagues on council, Councilman Dudley, Councilman Donahue, Councilman Nadevich, Councilman Burke, thank you for your guys' service to our country. Um, I, uh, I definitely appreciate your service. Um, I'd kind of like to address, um, with Councilman Dudley and Councilwoman Davis unspoken of, um, in terms of the email. Um, personally, I know that both of you do a lot for your residents, you do a lot of things for, for people in the community that, uh, you don't want to get publicized, and, uh, I know a lot of us on council do things that don't get publicized for our residents, and I think it's unfortunate that, you know, you were called out for, for something that Councilwoman Davis, that hadn't happened yet. But, uh, I support you guys in your efforts, and I support all of councilmen, your efforts in, uh, you know, doing good things for the community. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Blake. Um, I too would like to wish everyone, uh, all the veterans out there, uh, happy Veterans Day. Um, I could tell you that when I was eighteen years old and I enlisted into the United States Army, I don't think you do it with the intention of becoming a veteran one day, you do it because you want to serve your country. And, um, I'm glad I did it because it taught me a lot. Um, I always tell everybody that I talk to that if you're a young person and you have, uh, an uncertain way of where you want to go in life, um, the United States military is one of the best places to get a start and really learn some things. I learned how to be a leader, and I learned to lead by example, and, um, I'm very thankful for the times that I have in the United States Army, and I will tell you from the bottom of my heart, I'm very thankful for anyone who ever recognizes that, um, recognizes my service to the, to the United States. I am very thankful to, from the bottom of my heart, from everyone that conveys that. Um, I will tell you that I don't just celebrate Veterans Day on Veterans Day, I do a lot of, you know, I'll buy dinners for somebody who is in a restaurant, and I just happen to be there and I see their hat says they were Korean War vet or Vietnam War vet, that's, my heart goes out to the Vietnam War vets because my dad was one, and, um, he's long passed away now, but he knows how thankful I am of his service as well. Um, I too would like to say congratulations to Councilman Donahue, Councilman Blake, and Councilwoman Davis for hanging in there in probably what is arguably the toughest year of any council member in the city of Garfield Heights. I mean, we've had a lot happen, uh, I know that, uh, this has not been an easy year for, for all three of you, um, and, uh, I commend you for staying sane, and that's all I'll have to say about that. Uh, our next, uh, council meeting will be November twenty-third, two thousand twenty, and it will be via Zoom, I've already set it up, um, and that should be on the city's website, and not tomorrow, here shortly. Now, it may not be in a format that everybody's going to be happy with, you know, we're still trying to get a communication technology meeting together, which is coming December third, um, to help have a go over how to make the website a little bit more user-friendly, I get that. But at least for right now, I wanted to try to, to do whatever we can to try to get something out there so it's easy for anyone to be able to access. Um, that's all I have, I want to, uh, turn it over now to Councilman Vaughn. Councilman Vaughn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to thank the vets and the gentleman and the mayor for your service, greatly appreciated. My father was a vet, all my uncles, my grandfather, they're all vets. We were brought up to respect and always pay tribute to these late men and women that gave their time for our country, both in peacetime and in wartime. You know, every year, Ward Seven Block Watch gives away two food baskets for Thanksgiving, and there's a ham, a turkey, ground meat, all the fixins, milk, eggs, the, the whole conglomerate, two pies, box of candy, all kinds of good things for people. And it's just not food for one day, but maybe to get you through a week or two. And, um, even though we haven't met Block Watch since last, last February, we decide we're still going to do it. I'm going to ask that if somebody in Ward Seven is aware of a family that could use this, could you please let me know in the next, uh, five days, seven days, next week or so? And I say a family because there's so much food there, I'd hate to see a gift that goes away. Uh, again, you can call me at my home at two one six 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 three eight eight three seven. But I, I think it's important that we continue this, though, uh, again, it's always a, a great gift to give out, and, uh, please give me a call if you know the family that could use it.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman Vaughn?
At this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
On the motion made by Councilman Vaughn and seconded by myself to adjourn tonight's council meeting, will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Vaughn?
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Councilman Mike Dudley votes yes.
Donahue?
Chuck Donahue votes yes.
Nadevich?
Chuck Nadevich votes yes.
Davis?
Shayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Jason Blake, yes.
Burke?
This is Matt Burke, and I vote yes. Unless the record shows that at seven fifty-nine PM on November ninth, two thousand twenty, the council meeting for the city of Garfield Heights is now adjourned. Thank you.